Is the order?
Okay, that'd be great.
Next item on agenda is approval of minutes, consider approval of April 26th adjourned session, May 1st regular and closed session, May 4th adjourned and closed session, and May 8th adjourned session minutes.
Move to approve.
Motion by Councilmember Aldrich, second by Councilmember Townsend, further discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next I'm gonna ask for a couple of agenda adjustments. Number one, I want to move the proclamation number 17 up to before the public hearings, and we want to delete the number five announced delegations, the consultants for the employee health insurance, and move it to an adjourned budget work session that we will have at the end of our regular meeting tonight, because I think that's gonna be a lengthy discussion, and council needs to be able to understand that before we move forward with the budget.
Move approval of those agenda adjustments.
Motion by Councilmember Hall.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Hughes, further discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Our next item on agenda is the proclamation, the National Public Works Week. Ms. Underwood, would you like to come up forward and say anything?
Mayor, Council, thank you, and thank you for moving it up. The guys, they really appreciate that. Next week is the 57th Annual National Public Works Week, and it highlights the importance of investing and supporting public works. The theme is "Public Works Connects Us." Their logo had a bridge on it, but I decided to put a road on it. And we all have our t-shirts, we're all sporting new t-shirts, and we've provided y'all with one as well, and hope y'all enjoy it. We have a day planned next Wednesday, the 24th, with the third grade students at Central Elementary. We're going to have some equipment out there, and then we'll have bus tours down to the lean field, and we're gonna teach them about public works. So that's just one of the things we have planned for next week, but I really appreciate any support y'all are willing to give us, and we wrote the proclamation just for next week.
Thank you, and thank you all for coming out tonight. We're glad to see you, and we appreciate all you do. Council, I entertain a motion.
So moved.
Motion by Councilmember Dry, second by Councilmember Hall, further discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Council has adopted a proclamation that National Public Works Week from May 21st through 27th. So thank you for all you do, and we appreciate you coming tonight.
Thank you.
Let's get him out here.
There's one point of clarification, in case you think I'm overweight, this is an extra, extra small.
Next we'll move into a public hearing, item number two, ordinance 1715 to amend Chapter 92 of the city code.
Thank you, Mayor.
Mr. Robinson, would you come forward and announce that, please? Good job.
My job was to make that.
Okay, this ordinance is, proposed ordinance amendment deals with the skills, skills-based gaming and other gaming facilities establishments that we have. Previously, if you'll remember, we did have a, we had a section in the ordinance on sweepstakes. A section that doesn't really apply as much to the current skills-based gaming that we've seen applications for. Those are being done as conditional use permits. So we've done four different things with this ordinance. First, we've created a few different definitions, then we've selected, gone through the relevant zoning districts that apply to these, and made some changes there, and then we have also eliminated the sweepstakes section that will be, that'll be included in those other sections as well. I'm gonna go through kind of in order by page right now through what we've done. The first definition you'll see here is adult gaming establishment, and this is intended to be a catch-all. It's supposed to get the sweepstakes, to get your, your skills-based gaming, your games of chance, whatever, whatever have you. Pretty much get them all included under one definition right here. And they're called adult gaming because of, primarily because of the nature of the redemptions, that there may be some cash redemptions, as well as other adult-based, adult, I guess, kind of oriented awards that, rewards that come from those, so that's what we've done here. Little bit run-on of a sentence, but I think we got it all in. So it says, "Any establishment deemed legal by state law featured more than two standalone electronic or conventional gaming units, skill-based or otherwise, or serving more than two patrons in such a capacity at any one time, which also rewards patrons with cash or other monetary payments, goods, certificates for services which are redeemable for cash or other monetary payment, on or off-premise, and including online redemptions, as well as any rewards which cannot be legally obtained, consumed, or otherwise used by minors. Any use meeting this definition shall be considered primary use regardless of association or location in conjunction with other permissible primary uses. State of North Carolina sanctioned lottery function shall not be considered as adult gaming establishments for the purpose of this ordinance." So there's our first definition we've added in.
Before you leave there, why two?
Two, because we previously had in a different section in here, basically it was anything over two, I'm trying to remember exactly where it was, but, and that's been done elsewhere as well, so that's, I guess the thinking is that it's not really much of a primary use, it's not really to the establishment if there's only two of them there, so. I guess it's kind of an arbitrary number, but we include that.
I guess my question is, so anybody can do that anywhere if they only had two?
Yeah, I mean, it would be like an accessory use essentially, is what we're trying to establish, so.
So any home, anywhere, could have two machines if we don't regulate it?
I would think it would need to be, I would think it would need to be commercial in use, but yeah.
But we don't say that?
No.
Bring it back down again. Oh, whoever's doing that, thank you.
I guess my concern is somebody could put two anywhere and we wouldn't regulate it.
Yeah, and that's what we have right now, yeah.
Unless it was commercial.
Right, yeah, but...
But then, like the mayor says, it's, that's not mentioned in there.
Well, it's specified actually in the sections onward as applied right here.
Do you have it described elsewhere?
No, the two is definitely, the two is definitely, the two is what constitutes a primary use, is an adult gaming establishment.
Anything below two doesn't...
Anything below two wouldn't consider an adult gaming establishment, because there'd be some other primary use associated with it, it would be a secondary type thing.
So every convenience store around could have one of these?
Could have two.
Two of these. Is that what we want?
That's, I mean, we can make the change, previously...
Where was it in there now, sir? We've got it, we've got it, somewhere else in there we have it defined as two.
Central Business District, I think, was where it was allowed before as a conditional use permit. If I could find it real quick.
We can extract that, too.
No, yeah, I think we made the change.
Was it two in 2007?
Originally, I said, in the old electronic gaming, it does not mention a number at all. Am I correct?
It may have...
It limits the number, but it doesn't mention a specific number as to what constitutes the establishment.
So wait a minute, if the O in limits a number, there has to be a number in there.
Limit how many you can have, but not how few you can have.
Well, what I'm saying, yeah, but there is a number on there.
All the way down, okay, I'm trying to...
I guess my concern is that ordinance that we used that had electronic gaming before was written by the school of government, and now we're allowing up to, you know, two at any location. I have a little concern about that.
But was that one written for a specific thing?
It was electronic gaming.
Okay, well, this is kind of a blanket definition.
Was it in the definition?
Let me ask you, I guess my thing is, do you want your neighbor having electronic gaming over there and people coming in and out playing game and ga, all night?
No, I was just asking about the other one, how specific the other one was.
I guess that's my thing, how we restrict it.
We had it in CBD, I believe.
I would say that we just restrict it to any game and take out the number two.
That's fine, that's, yeah.
To make it any game.
I'm trying to find exactly, we had a, there was a conditional use for it in...
It was originally associated as being unlimited electronics game with billboards, billiards, and the key word there was, was three or more, and that's why we stuck with two, greater than two.
Mayor's got a point.
Okay, here it is, notwithstanding the above, computer gaming establishments in the Central Business District shall be allowed to have a maximum of two terminals, computers, machines, or gaming stations, so I guess that's kind of what we based it off of, but...
I guess I go back to the one that the school of government, when it says all.
Now, that was in a couple of years ago, right?
Yeah, so that's council's, that's your council's consideration.
Okay.
Continue on.
All right, there was definitely some inconsistency between...
Whoever makes a motion at some point, we need to change all that.
There's definitely some inconsistency between how they were addressed between zoning districts before, so we kind of tried to split the difference and use what was allowed in CBD, and still also allow for those maximum restrictions as well. It is, I'll get to the rest of that. Billiards halls, we did not have a description for billiard halls before, we didn't have a definition for them before, we felt was adequate really, and so I think we did an establishment that has five or more billiard tables on site for use, available for use by patrons of said establishment. Again, that's another arbitrary number, but we kind of feel usually if you have...
Council was specific at 10 when they adopted that, now we only have two members of council left, so that was here when that was adopted, but 10, I think, has been a good number to keep us from having these all over town. And if you go to five, you could have a lot more of them that, and I hate to say it, typically, billiard halls do cause...
This would actually be more restrictive.
That would be more restrictive.
This should be more restrictive than the, because there are restrictions on location, proximity to other billiard halls and other uses, so if you go with 10, that would actually be less restrictive by definition.
You can't have one if it's less than 10, by the old standards.
Now, we're saying five, right?
Well, we would consider anything less than five, I mean, if you got five, you know, less than five, it's not a billiard hall. If you got five, you know, five or more, then you're getting into the realm of, it's a billiard hall, that's the primary use of property.
That's not the way we interpreted it before. Before us, if it was less than 10, you could not have it.
Okay. Well, would you want to restrict all billiard tables, I mean, as an accessory use? I think that's what we're trying to establish here. If you've got a restaurant or something like that, and there's one pool table there, a billiard table there, or two, and that's kind of an accessory use to the rest of the establishment, is that, do you want, if you have to have more than 10, it would restrict that, it would take that use away unless you want to have it?
That was the intent of council when they did it. Now, I'm gonna refer to council now, we've got to change. That was the intent when they did it.
Because typically, from what I've seen, you really have to have that at least five, if not more, if it's gonna be just a billiards kind of establishment.
If that is gonna be their primary.
Right, exactly.
Of course, it's a secondary.
Have the police department reviewed this?
Uh, no, I don't believe so. General gaming establishment, any establishment deemed legal by state law excluding billiard halls, adult gaming establishments, and others similarly, others similarly defined in this chapter whose primary use is to provide entertainment services to the general public in the form of electronic or conventional gaming units, which provide either no reward to patrons or rewards of limited value such as children's toys, games, novelties, et cetera, when all of said rewards can be legally obtained by all ages and are not redeemable for cash or any other kind of compensation or services on or off premises, including online redemptions. So examples of these would include your traditional video game arcades, as well as children's and family game centers, I guess, I don't think we're quite to the point of getting a Dave and Buster's yet, but something like that, or Chuck E. Cheese, or something along those lines, to try to separate those out from the other gaming establishments that we're seeing right now as well. So, so these, and again, what we're trying to do with these is create, is account for both accessory and primary uses, because it gets very difficult for staff to make interpretations of these things on the fly when we don't have anything else to find. So we've tried to provide for a little bit of definition with that, and this, just kind of quick and dirty, we thought 50% or more than 50% of the patrons using it, or 50% of the total sales of the establishment, something like that, at that point it would be a primary use. Probably not a huge issue with this, but again, we want to try to, if we're gonna be defining uses, we want to try to add in what, you know, when does something become a primary use, and establish those parameters as much as possible. The other one's a profit club. We had it mentioned before, but we didn't have a good definition for it. This includes private clubs, nightclubs, taverns, bars, lounges, and similar establishments serving alcohol beverage for consumption on premises and providing entertainment for patrons. Basically, what staff thought with this was, was that, you know, primarily these should be, these should fit the definition of the private club that's, that's used by ABC right now, and in terms of how they, how they enforce that, that's probably the easiest, easiest way to go by that.
And they call it profit club.
They call it private club, yeah, and that's basically, they call it, they call them private clubs, we call it profit club previously in the ordinance, so we kept that definition in there. I think right now it's, you have to have over 30% food sales, something like that, at least, at least 30% food sales.
Has to be a restaurant, classified as a restaurant.
Has to be classified as a restaurant and have the 30%, that's right, otherwise it's a private club.
And by what we adopted in the city, private clubs are not allowed by the ABC referendum. So we are required to put this in here, I'm assuming, because it's a legal use, but they're not allowed in the city by our ABC referendum.
I wasn't aware of that.
Yeah. Yeah, honest to God.
Okay, we've, we've kept the, some of the parameters that were in, that we had before for profit clubs, so we've defined it, and then, "Profit clubs in operation shall be at least 400 feet from any residential use residential district, place of worship, school, or licensed child daycare, and located not than, not less than 1,500 feet from any other existing profit club in billiard hall. Measurements of location shall be a straight line from nearest point of property line to nearest point of property line." If it is not allowed for some other reason, then I guess that would be a moot point with that, but probably good to have the definition in there anyway.
Is a private club, profit club, when you pay $2 and join, you go?
That's kind of what we were thinking of with that, yeah. Okay, general gaming establishment, we've moved this, we've created a new definition for it, so we've added it into this section, which I should back up, which is GB, GHBD, General Highway Business District. So we got profit club in there, general gaming establishment. Billiard halls, provided they shall not be less than 1,500 feet from any other existing profit or billiard hall, measurement of location shall be a straight line from nearest point of property line to nearest point of property line. The reason for that, that we've added this in, if you look below here, unlimited electronic, mechanical, manual, and skills games, excluding however billiard tables, it makes reference to billiard tables, so we went ahead and created a definition for that to separate it out, then we've removed the unlimited electronic, mechanical, and skills games. We did not put the new definition for adult gaming establishment into GHBD, that's our recommendation that it not be located in that district. Instead, we have STD Shopping Center District, which is where we would recommend that one of the districts that it's, be allowed in, has a by right use. If you recognize the text from here, this is, this is a good portion of what we had previously included in the section on sweepstakes, which we are gonna be proposing to remove. The first part of this is on location, the establishments shall not be located in the same building or property where any place of worship, public or private school, or licensed daycare, child daycare facility, or any other existing adult gaming establishment is located. Adult gaming establishments shall also not be placed on properties within 500 feet of any of the aforementioned uses, measured by a straight line from nearest point to property line to nearest point to property line. Access, the same, same things we had in there, there needs to be an unobstructed view, the doors need to remain unlocked, and police officers, fire department personnel, development services, and emergency response personnel shall have direct access to the premises at all times that it's open. Hours of operation, and we did actually, we kept the recommendation that council had from the last conditional use permit hearing, we thought that was a good one, 10:00 AM to 12:00 midnight Monday through Saturday, and then 1:00 PM to 12:00 midnight on Sundays. So we've gone ahead and added that in there. Age restrictions, of course, no one under 18, signage, that all the rules of the game shall be posted prominently, maximum number, we've kept that cap at 20 that we previously had on sweepstakes, and we did take out the section on firearms in here, after review of that, I don't think it's, it's up to state statute anymore, so we went ahead and removed that, and then we have a part on violations, and the reason we've done this is that when you're dealing with these, the violation on these is a little bit different, you're dealing with individual situations that occur, and not necessarily a kind of a land use that's ongoing. So we, we wrote, "In addition to all applicable enforcement procedures permissible by city council, any violation of aforementioned conditions shall be punishable by a fine of up to $1,000 for the first violation, and $5,000 for each subsequent violation. Each violation that occurs shall be, on each successive day shall be considered a unique violation incident. Notice of violation and citation shall be sent to parties in accordance with Chapter 10, and when more than five violations occurs within any calendar year, the use shall be terminated and shall be prohibited anywhere on property from one year from date of closure. The closure shall be enforceable by the Almar Police Department." This is something we actually had, I think, $1,000 for each violation, it may even have been 500, and planning board actually thought that the first one should, should be the smaller, and that the subsequent violations should be a little bit more, so we've gone ahead and made that change at their recommendation. We have also included the general gaming establishment in the STD, again, that is your more kind of family-friendly gaming establishment, so that's just a by right use in those. We've removed the public game arcades, including electronic, mechanical, manual skill, now that we have a new definition for those. Some renumbering there. This is, again, this is, this is conditional use permit, which makes reference to billiards halls and separation of those and profit clubs, we went ahead and put that in that section as well. In Central Business District, we've added in general gaming establishment. We added in the billiards hall section, and we removed the unlimited electronic, mechanical, manual, and skills games, excluding however billiard tables, so you would have the billiards, the general gaming establishments, but not the adult gaming establishments in the CBD. And then the rest of this is the 92.087, which was exclusively related to the sweepstakes gaming, which is just struck through and removed, and we replaced that with a, with a reserved section for the future.
Okay, council, before we get, ask Kevin questions, let's see, this is a public hearing, does anyone else care to speak for or against this ordinance? Okay, hearing none. Council, go ahead and ask Mr. Robinson any questions.
I had a tough time waiting through all of this, to find, to just figure out what we were, what we were trying to do. Does this mean that these two out entities, gaming and billiards, now would not have to go for a conditional use permit, they could just come and file a permit in the office?
And staff could approve it.
Staff could approve.
That's one thing council has got before them tonight, it's a major change. I'll list the things I saw, because I was like, it is large, so I went through them. That's one of them. The billiard halls from 10 to 5, I think, is an issue council needs to address. The for-profit clubs, if Mr. Robbins thinks we have to have it in there because it is a allowable use, then we need to leave it even though our ABC permit restricts it. Our ABC referendum.
Is it subject to the restrictions in the ABC, or how would you do that?
I'll defer to you if you see that or just...
Yeah, it's, I mean, it goes without saying, if it's not allowed, then it's not allowed.
They're not gonna get a permit, they're not gonna get...
I don't know when that's...
I'm gonna defer to Chief Bowen back here. We had this come up years ago, and the ABC commission issued a permit for one, basically saying that the referen, they didn't even think about the referendum, is what I understand. And then, when it went out of business, when they come up to get a next one, they enforced the ABC referendum. So what's the latest you've heard, Chief Bowen? I don't know that we've had one to go before them to even make a decision lately.
You're correct, the issue has not come up, and I don't know what the ABC commission right now would rule. I can check with them and let you know, but we haven't had the issue come up, so I'm...
Well, if we're just putting this in here, and it's subject to ABC, I think it'd just come up whenever someone tries to get a permit.
It was in there before, it was, but probably from a long time ago. We said no definition for it, and we didn't really, really know what it was, we're trying to provide a little bit of clarity on what that would be.
And the last thing that I saw, council, and I'll refer back to the two that were here, when you passed the billiard hall, it was a request of council that time that these only be allowed where they, places had sufficient off-street parking. That has been removed. Do you want it in or out? That's, that's another decision you need to make.
Lots of that in there, the whole...
That was, to be honest, that was one of those things, I just wasn't real sure about them.
Wasn't clear on, I understand.
Yeah, a lot of them there before.
That was, well, that was a request of the prior council, because they wanted to make sure if you had one, you could, you weren't gonna be parking on the street.
I recall the requirement, for some odd reason, and I don't know why, but it has something to do with a certain number of parking spaces based on the square footage of...
Of the building.
Of the building, you know.
But we don't, we don't do that any, we don't do, we probably, we probably used to do that before, parking requirements, and we don't do that anymore.
We no longer regulate that, that parking sizes and things, right. Council, that's the questions I see before you that you need to make a decision on.
I'll...
Yes, sir.
If I can do one other thing, it hasn't come up for a while, so I don't know it's really an issue anymore, but it used to be, so it's just one of those things from, you know, the mayor's providing some history. I think previous to this, well, we say this ordinance as proposed allows what we previously had as arcades, and now just falling under the general gaming establishments, we used to have those only in, I think, shopping center and mixed-use shopping center districts, the thought being that if it got too much of a problem, that they were in a shopping center, that they're a part of a larger property affecting other businesses, that the property management group or the owner would take care of those, like, this is now taking it, I think, beyond that and allowing it in a general highway business district. That may not be a problem at all, but that was just a little bit of the, the history behind why they had previously been in shopping center, mixed-use shopping center districts.
Would you just allow it in downtown?
Say that again.
Did you put one of these in downtown?
Arcade?
Clarify what you're saying, what kind?
Central Business District.
Yeah, they're different things, either one of them.
Okay.
So in the Central Business District, you restricted adult gaming and arcades both, do you not?
Adult gaming, adult gaming establishment is not, is not, with this current ordinance, would not be allowed in CBD.
What about billiard halls?
Billiard halls? Yes, we wrote billiard halls in as a conditional, conditional use. Falling conditional uses are permitted when authorized by city council after council holds a public hearing, which is questionable what they meant here. Before, it had unlimited electronic, mechanical, manual, and skill games, excluding however billiard tables, so we weren't really sure what the intent of that was, but we felt if anything, conditional use would probably cover that. So that's, that's in there, and it does have, it does have the requirement to be separated 1,500 feet from existing profit club, billiard hall, and measurement of location to be a straight line from the nearest point to nearest point of the property.
If I recall correctly, I don't think billiard halls were allowed... If I recall correctly, I don't think billiard halls were allowed in the Central Business District before, but he has put them as a conditional use. So council would still have to say on whether they could be or not, if you want to look at each one case by case, or if you want to eliminate them altogether, you can remove that section.
Yeah, it's one of those things where the language on there was a little bit confusing. I mean, it says, you know, that it's allowing all the, or allowing all these as a CEP except for this, so we just weren't really sure, we weren't really sure what exactly supposed to be done with them there. But if you all want to take that out, we'd be happy to strike that through.
Personally, I'd like not to see them in Central Business District.
Mayor.
That's just me.
One concern that I see, dealing with the profit club restrictions, we talk about, on one hand, bringing life to downtown, you know, residential living after the Fight for College project and stuff, but we, and when I say bring life to downtown, I'm talking about after 5 o'clock. But then we throw a restriction in here about clubs, bars, taverns, and things of that nature. You can't locate within 400 feet from a church or a school or daycare. Y'all know for a fact, we got churches every 250 feet or more in downtown Alamo. I think we're finna restrict ourselves back to a continuance of a dead downtown.
Well, the downtown would be restricted for the taverns, bars, and all, again, because I think the ABC ordinance strictly prohibited that. You gotta have the food involved. Now, if they did food, they would qualify.
Yeah, obviously, you know.
But there wouldn't be a tavern then, would there?
There'd be a restaurant.
That's right. They, I mean, they, they might be, they might have that.
Now, every downtown I've ever been to, you know, and I don't know what you call it, but nightclubs consisted primarily dancing and a bar and whatever, you know, now we're gonna restrict that, you know, we asking for a disaster, you know?
That was, that was expressly denied in the ABC referendum, because that was thought, the only way they thought they could ever get it passed.
Okay, well...
And, well, it's restrict, there again, we don't know what ABC's gonna rule, but if they go by the referendum, it's expressly denied in our referendum.
I think some of these things we might have to revisit, because people don't want to come to a dead downtown. We can think large, but if we got too many restrictions, people gonna go on the outer skirts or elsewhere, you know, so.
Well, we've defined it here, and so the thing is, I mean, we can come back, you know, later on if you'd like, you know, and put it in a, you know, put it in CBD, or put it somewhere else, wherever, you know, wherever you feel works best.
Well, you've got it in here. So if somebody came and ABC allowed it, it would be permitted. If they classified a restaurant, it's a moot point anyway.
Right.
If they do the restaurant.
Right, absolutely. And that's how most of these places, most of these places function.
Right.
If I could, real quick.
Sorry.
No, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Would that be conditional use, or just coming, we have to go before you guys would come directly to us? Or any of these, what Dexter was talking about?
All right, so they're not allowed.
For-profit club is allowed in GHBD.
For-profit club is allowed, and it's got those restrictions already placed, the separation restrictions already, already on it, so.
So they'd have to sort of, period.
Yeah, if they wanted to avoid having to go through that, we would classify them as a restaurant, and they, you know, wherever the restaurant's allowed is where they'd be allowed to go.
I'm agreeable with Dexter. We gotta, where we are today is not where we're gonna be tomorrow. And we gotta be able to adjust and look forward and be somewhat proactive as the times begin to change.
Right now, they're allowed in shopping center district, it looks like, with conditional use. They've got the clause, of course, that 1,500 feet on them, and then, we don't have them downtown on here right now, as it is.
So the way this is written, you could have a bar downtown. That there serves no food?
No, no, no.
You couldn't.
You couldn't. The way it's written now, you cannot have a bar downtown.
And this is, we're honestly, we're not changing that, what we have right here, we're not changing that whatsoever.
But this brings up an issue that we've had several, several comments or several statements in red and several statements in black, okay? So we've got some changed and some left alone that takes regard of our ABC referendum. And that ABC referendum was, golly, was it 20 years ago?
Wow, more than 20 years.
20, something, about 20 years ago. A lot, and that, I think, answers some of this, okay? But I'm on the same page with Dexter. I mean, we've got to be open, if what we're having here is 200 students in two and a half years, or three years, that are the millennials, they're gonna want somewhere to be. Now, granted, like Dexter said, yeah Dexter, I think we've got six churches downtown within six blocks of each other. I mean, you know, we've got to be open-minded about that, but on the other hand, we've got to look at what the ABC, whenever we got them.
I think you, if you want to add it, you can add it, just add it in here, and then the ABC referendum will control it, not us. The people voted that in, not us.
And I can say honestly, in North Carolina, in my experience at least, that the vast majority of the bars that you see, they do meet the definition, the ABC definition of a restaurant, based upon food sales, that 30%, and I'm not sure how they do that, if it's an annual base, I have no idea, but the vast majority of them meet that requirement, so.
Most of them, they might call it a bar, but just about every one of them serve food.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah. They usually call them a club, if they're a club, and you gotta pay a dollar or two to get a membership card and everything to get in, so a little bit different.
I hear a lot of different opinions. I think we need to help them, look at them probably one at a time, and vote on them one at a time. But first of all, I'll ask again, does anyone care to speak for or against, this is a public hearing? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing. Motion by Councilmember Hall.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Hughes. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye. So let's just start through them one at a time and make the decisions. Are you comfortable with adult gaming establishments, as Mr. Robinson has presented, being decided by the staff and not coming to council as a conditional use? I'm agreeable.
I am, so move.
Then I don't think I need a motion on that, because it's in the proposal.
Okay.
All right, second, billiard tables. Are you comfortable reducing it to five from 10?
Mm-hmm. I am.
You're comfortable with that, okay?
Yeah, if you don't do that, I mean, if you reduce it to five, you could still downtown in a restaurant have four billiard tables, because you wouldn't be considered...
I guess that's the thing that Kevin's seeing it different. The old ordinance said that you had to have 10.
Minimum.
Minimum 10, or you could not have a billiard hall. That was put in because we had typically billiard halls cause issues, and we put that in to try to restrict the number that was in the city that constantly caused calls for service. That's the reason that was put in. Now, if I understand what he's saying now, he's lowering that to five.
So you could have, before, in order to have one, you had to have 10?
Yes, sir.
Now, in order to have one, you gotta have five, so to me...
No, he is saying, anything under five, you can have.
And not be called, and not be called a billiard hall.
Be considered an accessory use to a...
That's a major change, folks.
Yeah, it isn't, it is.
That's the biggest thing I see in this whole thing. I think we're opening ourselves up for a lot of issues.
I just, I know, I know a lot of establishments, when you go out there, have one or two pool tables when you go in, and it's largely restaurants, you know, bars, what have you, but that's not really their primary function. That's kind of what our thinking was with it, that, you know, a few of these probably wouldn't be too bad, but it's when you start getting more of that, and it's an actual, that's the primary function of it and everything, that's when you start getting some of the legal issues, that crime and such.
And this definition is for primary?
Yeah, this is, we wouldn't...
For them to be called?
Wouldn't classify something that has, you know, less than that, you know, in addition to, like I said, like a restaurant or something else, a billiards hall. We'd consider it a restaurant that has accessory uses, that has, you know, four, you know, three, four, or five billiard tables there, so.
But if it has more than five, it has to be classified as a...
And that number's not set. I mean, you can...
I think it's five.
Take it, take it, run with it. I mean, drop it to three, you can make it to 10, doesn't matter, we're just trying to, trying to spell that out here.
I'm gonna have trouble appearing consistent on this, but I can see having a restaurant, having a couple of pool tables over there, and like a boardroom, it's big enough, have a couple of pool tables in there, it'd probably be okay, I guess.
That's totally up to council.
And basically, that's fine, as long as it doesn't have five, or more, six, five, that's right, five or more.
Five or more, you could have up to four, basically, yeah.
Four, and they're fine.
I think I'm all right with that now.
I am.
Everybody else good with it?
I see the chief, I'm curious.
Well, see, I know.
I think he's sitting back keeping quiet, because he knows we're here, that you're putting a...
The chief, and whenever Ronnie asks, it's the chief that's seen this.
Because what I recall, and I'll be honest with you, you know, it's, whenever we set those standards, back whenever it was, I think we was basing it on prior business or building, or whatever it might have been, that was in existence prior to us establishing all this criteria that was classified as a pool hall in Alamo. We didn't have nothing else to base it on, and I don't know if that location had gave us problems, but to my knowledge, we were basing all this ordinance on one particular business, to my knowledge.
Multiple businesses, but they were under 10. We had multiple pool halls under 10.
But now, it's a different day and time. People got other places to go. It wasn't nowhere else to go back then, you know, so I think we're living in a new day and time. You know, I don't, if somebody had one or two tables, I don't foresee a lot of problems, unless it's something I'm missing. Now, you got past law enforcement experience, and the chief, you know, I would like to hear from y'all, you know, I don't know, you know?
I'm of the opinion alcohol and pool don't mix, but I'm sorry, that's just the way I feel.
All right, to that point, if we do this, and in five, or three or four years, it blows up, can we not go back and change this?
But you can't get rid of anything that's already there.
Okay.
That'd be grand followed in, is that what you're saying?
Good answer, mayor.
All right, moving on.
I'm lying again.
Hold on a minute, I think we're not through it, I think that might be...
Has the city attorney looked at the proposed? You have any concerns whatsoever?
Well, these numbers are always just sort of, you know, I mean, whatever you want along with the numbers concerned, but I talked to Kevin, and I'm gonna agree, I had to go before I could have gotten a chance to talk to him about it. It must be stuff he's full, I think, out of the general statutes, full of law out of the general statutes, trying to upgrade it and update it, and that's sort of coming into the 21st century, as far as the numbers, like five tables or this, that, now that's what you want, you know, the rest of them are table.
Kevin, if I may ask, have you done any research of cities and towns' close proximity in size to Alamo? What does their ordinance say, do you know? I mean, are they five tables, 10 tables?
I was referencing the billiards halls, I don't, we didn't do any research on that one. Honestly, this one wasn't, we were just trying to, we didn't have a good definition for it in here. It's mentioned kind of elsewhere throughout the text, we're trying to find a place for it. I wasn't really trying to create a whole lot of heartwarming with that one, it's a little bit of sense. So no, I didn't do a whole lot of research, but I, it's usually somewhere between three, you know, three, five, six, somewhere in that area is where they typically have a cutoff on those, but I don't know in the immediate area what they've done around here, so.
We don't like five.
I don't have a problem.
We can lower it, we don't have to say five.
We're at the public hearing right now.
We can go to four, John, three, I mean...
Yeah, whatever you want.
Number's ancillary to him.
I, yeah, I think if you're...
Helps us to define it.
If you're uncomfortable, find out what number. Let's let him have some time to research it and then come back to us.
I'd like to know the towns around us, what they do.
I think he was trying to get this thing passed tonight, guys, but I too would like some comparison.
I'd like to know what Salisbury does, and Concord does.
Well, why don't we just, why don't we just lower it then? Why don't we lower it to like three? And if you're not comfortable with that...
Yeah, let's go three.
We can do some research and, you know...
Three.
Where your restaurant could have two.
Yeah.
I'd say three. I'm fine with three.
Any restaurant can have anything less than three.
Less than three, so one or two.
Okay, so three or more, they have to beat the requirements for billiard tables.
So change five to three.
Okay, okay.
Have darts or something instead.
Yes, there we go.
Chief Bowen?
Cornhole.
Comments?
Cornhole, huh, something.
I don't blame you, I'd hide two.
A lot of things in alcohol that we explain.
I agree.
He wants an alcohol on this.
That's exactly right.
That's the big problem. Okay, yeah, the other question was the off-street parking for billiard halls. Is that an issue for this council, or is council good with leaving it out?
Where is that?
That was in the old ordinance, not in the new one, that's the...
I don't think that's an issue.
We're not restricting it for anything else now?
We gotta quit, we're quitting all these.
No, no, not that, I know what. Okay, have we addressed every question that council had?
I believe, mayor, you had a question about gaming units. I believe that we went with CBD, I think, was, would allow them, would allow up to two conditional use on there, so we went with two as kind of being the cutoff on that for what would be adult gaming establishment. I think that was our reasoning on that, but you had mentioned, you had a question about that, if that's something...
My question there was, you know, the school of government had said, basically all, any, any amount. So when you went one or above, I guess that was my question on that one. And that's, that again, is council's decision. How do you feel about your definition on adult gaming establishment on page one?
Can we just take that to?
I'd take that, take out the two and leave it all.
Take it out.
Any, yeah.
All right, then, I think I've heard, yes, ma'am?
And so, and just for clarification, we are creating one single district where this, where adult gaming establishment.
This will technically be in two districts, I didn't want to mention that. This would also be allowed in the MUSCD district, because MUSCD allows the same uses as SCD. There's some other stuff in there, some other stipulations on there on size and all that kind of stuff for the district itself, for the...
The only two places adult gaming will be shopping center and mixed-use shopping center.
Mixed-use shopping center, that's correct.
That's the only two locations.
That's correct.
No general highway business.
That's right, takes it out of GHBD and takes it out of CBD.
I wanted to make sure that was clarified.
Counsel, if you're prepared to move forward, I need a motion to do that, but I also need that motion to include lowering the pool tables to three, and the adult gaming to all, and not just two, not starting at two. Whoever wants to make a motion.
I'll move that ordinance 15, 1715, to amend Chapter 92 of the city code, be amended as presented with those two specifications of adult gaming establishment to any.
To any.
To any, and billiards, billiards to three.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Hughes. All those in favor, if you need any further discussion. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, motion carries. All right, we'll move on to our next public hearing, which is a conditional use permit Mr. Robinson, you want to introduce that one?
I'm actually gonna let Nasser do this one, he's a little bit more familiar with the application on it than I am, so I'll let him do that. Pull that up for you right there.
This is a quasi-judicial hearing. Is it going to be a public hearing? Anyone who cares to speak for or against needs to be sworn in. Does anyone care to speak for or against? If so, come to the front. Nasser, if not, find the Bible. Ms. Bowers, you got the Bible?
I can go upstairs and get one.
Ah, there's one.
Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give be the truth?
I do.
No one else cares to speak for or against? All right, Nasser, go ahead and introduce it now.
Okay, this is conditional use permit 1702. In it, I am requesting for the conditional use per Central Business District for 92.083C1, colleges, universities, technical institutions, public elementary. I'm just more interested in the college section. So, beginning on Section 92, 101E for standards, in response to the first question, the use will not materially endanger the public health or safety if located where proposed. The property is currently zoned Central Business District. Central Business District allows for a significant number of uses by right, that range in scale from single-family residential to multifamily mixed-use structures. As you guys saw, when Kevin was going through the text amendment, there's actually 96 by-right uses in Central Business District, and I think over seven conditional uses. So, leading to that, many of the adjoining properties in the vicinity of the proposed[1781.92] the vicinity of the proposed use are of a commercial nature. The proposed use is a university. The proposed project is a building that will house five for university graduate level teaching facilities for enrollees in the field of medicine. The submitted plans, here specifically, this was given to us last month, this is kind of a preliminary site plan for the structure based off of what was submitted. I am not seeing any significant impact to the surrounding areas that would adversely, any adverse externalities that would materially endanger the public health or safety. For section ninety-two point one oh one E subsection B, the uses meets all specific conditions and specifications specified in the site plan. It did account for, if you can actually see it right here, it accounts for the 100-year floodplain right around here. The proposed building will actually be outside of the floodplain, which is fantastic. It will have a few structures in the floodplain. They're thinking about signage is going to be there. That's going to have to meet section, chapter ninety-three and then other things like building code, fire code, local ordinances for buffer, parking wrecks, all that stuff. All of that stuff is actually in the site plan and it will be met per the site plan specs. So, I think B is being satisfied by the site plan that's being submitted. And of course, they are going to get permits for all this. So, I do believe that the all required conditions and specifications per local law, state law, and federal will be met when it's being constructed. Ninety-two point one oh one EC, the use will not substantially injure the value of adjoining or abutting properties or alternatively that the use must be a public necessity. The estimated construction cost, I spoke with the architect for this, he told me last time he had checked, the cost was to exceed $10 million. Based on the submitted Stanley County tax record cards accompanying this application, a lot of the adjoining property values and five points are assessed between 13,000 and 2 million. Given the estimated cause of the proposed structure, one can infer that such investment shall not injure the value of adjoining properties. The proposed use of the university may increase the value of adjoining properties. That is my response to that. I'm not a certified real estate appraiser, but based on the cost and the fact that many of the structures are commercial around it, one can infer that it will not have an adverse effect to adjoining properties. Ninety-two one oh one ED, the proposed use is in harmony with many adjacent uses in terms of location, scale, site design, hours of operation, and operating characteristics. Per the submitted plans, the structure will have a roof line of 57 feet, four inches, and a square footage totaling 48,620. Five for University will operate the facility during normal business hours and may have some evening classes. Please refer to the site plan for the site design that you can see. In reference to adjoining properties, many of the adjoining properties range from one to three stories. Many of the adjoining properties vary in terms of use from residential to non-residential with the overwhelming majority being non-residential. So, you've got to also think Central Business District allows for no height restrictions and full development of the entire parcel. So, I do not think that this proposed development will, I think it will go along with the location, scale, and site design, given the fact that Central Business District is meant to be highly intense. That's where you want skyscrapers to go. We have no height limitations. We have no minimums even for open space. So, I think that's pretty good. Will it be in general conformance with the adopted plans? Albemarle's 2028 land use plan actually shows that this site falls under city center zoning. I actually stole this definition from it. City center encompasses Albemarle's downtown and contains a variety of office, retail, service, and residential uses. Development considerations include design and use compatibility with the historic and urban framework. It is important to know that this site did go in front of Historic Resources Commission and was approved. So, I think it fits along with the historic and urban framework. The proposed building for university is currently working with, well, I already said that, but it's been approved since then. And city center, of course, called out for in the future land use plan, has a lot of uses that range in scope and scale. So, I think this is a good fit. Switching to ninety-two point one oh one E two, placement, where it says specific placement of primary and accessory structures, page seven and eight, again, answer that question. So, I think we're good to go. It's going to show that, as you can see, this is the primary use and the proposed main building. There's really just a few accessory structures over on the northern part, but nothing significant. I think that answers the question of placement. In terms of parking spaces with ingress and ingress, again, we're projecting that the ingress will be here off of main and then the egress will be off of fourth. Our current zoning ordinance does not require any parking requirements. It just asks that landscape be met if you're going to do parking and it's going to be met. So, we don't really have to worry too much about parking space numbers because it's not a rec requirement in our ordinance. Moving on to see environmental impact, page seven and eight include the site plan. Again, going back to this, there's the 100-year floodplain. It's outside of the 100-year floodplain in terms of the primary structure. Any accessory structures, anything in the 100-year floodplain will have to meet chapter 93 in our ordinance, and we're in discussion with that, especially this section over here. Screening buffering landscape, page seven and eight include, as you can see over here, this is a buffer fence, and a lot of the other adjoining properties actually do not need buffers per our buffer ordinance. So, it's going to meet that. Effects on nearby properties, effects proposed on a nearby property including but nominal to the effects of noise, odor, lighting, and traffic. This is high intensity use, but then again, all of Central Business District allows for high intensity commercial uses. The biggest concern here potentially could have been the smell of cadavers, cadavers, but if you.
The smell of dead.
Right, but they will actually be housed on the fourth floor. So, it will be right here, actually, and this is where the cadaver facilities will be. I actually asked Carlos Nia, this professional engineer, and he gave me an attachment actually included in the application showing the ventilation requirements for autopsies and that they would meet it so that there is going to be no adverse scent coming out from this. And then we also found out that more than likely plumbing will also be separate from attached plumbing. So, I think we have addressed that issue in terms of any odor. Noise, like I said, normal business hours, maybe some evening classes. I'm not expecting significant noise. Lighting and traffic, again, traffic is expected increase. However, such an increase will not be significant due to primary parking being located off premises. Compatibility, the level of general compatibility. The proposed structure is very similar to other commercial projects at Five Point, particularly the Lilian Mills project, which is three stories tall, because many of the adjoining properties are multi-story and non-residential, and I think this is going to be good. Because this is the same with policy, again, going back to the land use plan, I think that kind of answered it pretty well. City center will, allows for a variety of office, retail, and residential uses, and I think the elasticity of city center goes well with Central Business District, and this use is no exception.
Counsel, in just a few minutes, if you're, we'll have to approve this by the findings of fact. If you want to look at that, look under the CUP attachment, start on page three, and you will see their answers as we go through them one by one. Anyone have any questions for Nasser?
The only thing I'd like to add is that that building has to be finished, I believe, about a year before they can take a class. And that building will undergo major scrutiny by professional and federal agencies for a lot of things, far more than what we do, to make sure it's right for the public.
Anyone have any questions?
Just a matter of parliamentary procedure. Since this is a public hearing, we'll close the public hearing before we do the final.
Yeah, but I want to make sure nobody's got a question of Nasser at this point. One more call. Does anyone have anything to say for or against before we close the public hearing? Hearing none, it'd be ordered to obtain a motion. Motion by council member Dry to close the public hearing.
Second.
Second by council member Aldridge, further discussion. All those in favor, say aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Okay, now we're going to go through the findings of fact. The first finding of fact, the use will not materially endanger the public health or safety if located or proposed and developed according to the plan as submitted and provided. Motion by council member Hall, second by council member Townsend, further discussion. All those in favor, say aye. Second, the use meets all required conditions and specifications.
So moved.
Motion by council member Townsend.
Second.
Second by council member Hughes, further discussion. All those in favor, say aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Three, the use will not substantially injure the value of adjoining or abutting property or alternatively that the use will be a public necessity.
So moved.
Motion by council member Aldridge.
Second.
Second by council member Townsend, further discussion. All those in favor, say aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Number four, the proposed use is in harmony with the adjacent uses in terms of location, scale, site design, hours of operation, and operating characteristics.
So moved.
Motion by council member Hughes.
Second.
Second by council member Aldridge, further discussion. All those in favor, say aye. Those opposed, motion carries. And the last one, the project will be in general conformance with the adopted plans of our land use plan. So moved. Motion by council member Dry. Second by council member Whitley, further discussion. All those in favor, say aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Nasser, anything else you need from this?
No, you approved everyone and then?
I think you, everything's good.
Okay, thank you. Our next public hearing, a public hearing to consider the proposed fiscal year 2017-18 City of Albemarle budget. This is a public hearing. Anyone who cares to speak for or against, please come up.
Motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion by council member Townsend to close the public hearing, second by council member Hall, further discussion. All those in favor, say aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Counsel, we are not going to vote on this at this time. We are going to adjourn to a budget work session after this to hear from the health insurance representative before we take that vote. Announced delegations, we will not have, that's the one we're going to move to the adjourn session. Unannounced delegation, Mr. Chuck Mance to speak on the heart of Albemarle.
Hello, Mayor, counsel. Good evening. I appreciate the opportunity to address you. On March 24th of this year, I was presented an notification to abate potential nuisance violations that could be occurring on a property that I own at 300 South First Street. After carefully reading the chapter 19 of North Carolina General Statute that was presented to me at the same time, I took action to resolve any potential nuisance violation that could be occurring there by evicting all the tenants and residents and intend to change the utilization of the property. The 45 days has came and gone, and I'm asking for an authorization to proceed with renovations that we have currently planned for the property. A portion of the permits are on hold through the planning department, and I'm asking for permission to get those off of hold so that I can proceed with continuing with the renovations. This past week, there was nearly 300 new applicants for section eight housing at a event that was held over at the Ewadell Center, and there is an extreme need for affordable housing. And there is also a, continues to be an epidemic of drug use that Stanley County and Albemarle needs to address. And I'm trying to look at some of my notes to make sure I bring up everything. There is an, with nearly 300 new applicants, it was pretty obvious to me that there is an extreme need for affordable housing in not only Albemarle but Stanley County. And like I say, we are battling an epidemic of drug use. After conversation with service providers that we've been in conversation with to assist these individuals, our program, with our program, providing substance abuse counseling and other things, we, I feel that there's an opportunity for that property to be used as an asset for this city, and I appreciate your consideration and look forward to continue to make improvements on properties that I own and other properties within the city. I'm basically just here to see if there is anything other than what has been completed that you all have a desire to be done on the property so that I can proceed with the renovations and the outfit that I've presented you all with before.
I, as you know, there is an ongoing nuisance abatement issue, as you've mentioned, being conducted by the state alcohol law enforcement division and an attorney that represents us and the alcohol and law enforcement division. I wish we could address the issue, but at this point, I have to refer you to go through them for any kind of a negotiation on a consent order to do anything further.
Okay, well, my, basically, my question is, I was presented with a 45-day notification to abate and, to abate an issue. That was the first notification that I ever received about any issue on the property. Upon receiving of that 45-day notification to abate an issue, I've looked at the general statute, and any potential violation of that general statute, chapter 19, has been abated by me evicting all the tenants, closing the, closing the business, evicting my tenant and all of her sub-tenants. So, I guess my question is, since the 45 days has came to an end, I haven't been notified by ALE or your attorney of any other actions that have been placed as far as a civil action filed with the county or anything like that. So, the only thing that I have to respond to is the notification that the chief of police presented to me to abate the issue within 45 days. I have went over and beyond what has been requested of me to abate the issue. According to the general statute, any potential violation of that is, has been abated. Now, upon my, upon my service of that 45-day abatement, I asked the chief of police and I asked what triggers, what triggers a nuisance abatement investigation. Well, I was notified at that time as due to cause of the number of calls for service for, for a particular property. Well, immediately, I had my secretary to request a number of calls for service for my property and another property that belongs to the City of Albemarle. And it comes to my knowledge that the calls for service to a property owned by the City of Albemarle has a tremendous amount more calls for service than, than my particular property. So, I don't know what causes a nuisance abatement investigation or what triggers it, and I don't know what the next step is. So, I'm basically at the mercy of counsel to, to allow the planning department to release my building permit application to, so that I can obtain my permits to continue with my renovations, because the 45 days has came and gone.
I can't refer you to anything other than the attorney to discuss that with him. He can come to us, but we have to go through the attorney for anything that you want to bring to us. Have you, have you spoken with the attorney or the ALE officer?
Yes, yes, I did.
In the last few weeks?
No, I spoke to, I spoke to them in response to what was served to me from the chief of police.
And have you spoke, have you spoke to them, any of them, since you were given the consent order?
What consent order?
The consent order that the chief gave you?
The, I haven't received a consent order.
Chief Bowen?
I received something that I, that I gave the chief, the city manager. It wasn't, it was not an order, it was.
That was it?
It's not an order.
Yeah. Was the consent order as prepared by the attorney and alcohol law enforcement?
The proposed consent agreement.
Yes, consent agreement, right.
Mr. Mance.
Okay.
Last Monday.
That's a proposed.
And you've not had, you've not talked to them since then?
That's a proposed consent agreement, that's not a consent order.
So are you, you've not spoken to them since then?
I tried to reach the ALE agent, I have not received a call back.
I would encourage you to speak with them, because Counsel cannot make any comment on this as it's an ongoing case until this, you go through the attorney and the attorney comes to us.
With that potential agreement.
Okay. Five days after I was presented with this abatement issue, I presented a settlement agreement that I've never received any, any response from Counsel about. I believe your county, your city clerk has receipt of that, and she disseminated that to all of you, I never received anything in response to that.
And that has been forwarded to the attorney. So that's the reason I'm referring you to the attorney.
But your attorney is representing you in an action that's not filed?
He's rep, representing us in a nuisance abatement in accordance with state statute.
Okay, so my, 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 my ask, my reason for asking is, I was given 45 days to abate an issue, I have abated an issue within the 45 days, so what is my next step? Do I just wait for a civil action?
Continue to go through the attorney, and if you come to an agreement, he'll bring it to us, but at this point, we've got nothing from the attorney or the ALE that says that you have responded to them and that they are, have accepted it under acceptable grounds. There are, there are grounds in the consent agreement that you was presented, and if you wish to talk to, about that, you need to talk that through the attorney. Counsel cannot, cannot make a comment tonight.
There's, there's not, there has not, there has been a potential consent agreement presented to me, a consent to something that has not even been filed, if you understand what I'm saying.
And that's the typical order, my understanding of a nuisance abatement, they try to do that before you end up with a lot of legal fees, but it is up to you whether you agree to it or they proceed on...
Not to obtain legal counsel, I mean, the city can afford to spend the taxpayer dollars in the manner that they wish to, paying $400 an hour for this, for this attorney that they've hired, it's an out-of-town attorney, again, not supporting the local businesses here, here in the city, but I guess what I'm trying to say is, so basically, you all are holding permits for progress for potential utilization of a property that's in great demand, we have a great demand for low-income housing, we have a great demand for substance abuse counseling, and you all are holding up a permit for, and you're using a nuisance abatement that has not been filed as a, as a reason for holding up my building permits. I guess what I'm saying is, I need you all to crap or get off the pot because, because you're holding my progress up.
So you're asking us to go ahead and file the paperwork, is that what you're asking?
I'm asking you, if you are, if you're continuing, if you are going to file the paperwork, file the paperwork, if you're not going to file the paperwork, don't hold up my permits.
Okay, we will pass that information on to our attorney.
Thank you.
Thank you. Number six, monthly departmental reports are in your agenda, anyone have any questions? Number seven, under new business approval of the low bid for the corporate center financing, before we go into that, I need to excuse Ms. Hughes from discussion on this and the next matter.
Move that we excuse her for both, seven and eight.
Motion by Councilmember Hall, second by Councilmember Dry to excuse Ms. Hughes.
Don't go too far.
Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Number seven is to consider approval of the resolution to accept the low bid from BB&amp;T, a 15-year loan to finance the purchase of corporate center land.
So moved.
Motion by Councilmember Dry.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Aldridge, further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. One against. And next is authorization, authorization for the financing of the corporate center with BB&amp;T, and this will be contingent on LGC.
And I think that's the big issue, it is contingent.
Contingent on LGC.
Local government commission will...
Correct. This is our steps to go to get it before the LGC.
A move approval.
Motion by Councilmember Hall.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Whitley, further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. And one against.
And just a second, I think we...
You asked Ms. Hughes to come back, Mr. Rinn.
I think that we've got to be, that's, and the reason I mention that is, you know, the local government commission determines...
Whether we can proceed.
Whether we can proceed and on what grounds, and I think we all understand that we've got to do whatever they make us do.
Number nine, ordinance 1717 is a budget amendment, and if you'll open your agenda package, you have an attachment for what those are. There's a variety of items in there, you'll see public safety administration, planning, development, water and sewer, landfill, and administrative fees for the Section 8 housing, all of that is an expense, the revenue is coming from the fund balance, revenue from other governments, fund balance appropriated from water and sewer, grant revenue, Section 8 housing assistance, and Section 8 fund balance.
Move approval, ordinance 1717.
Motion by Councilmember Hall to approve ordinance 1717.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Hughes, further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Next is to call for a public hearing for a conditional use permit for 1920 Hillco Street. I think the recommendation is for our next meeting, June 12.
Please approve a public hearing on June 12.
Motion by Councilmember Hall.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Hughes, further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Number 11, a call for a public hearing to consider an annexation and approval of a major subdivision, this is off 2427, again on June 12.
Move approval.
Motion by Councilmember Hughes.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Aldridge, further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Number 12, call for a public hearing to, where a conditional use permit 1703 at 636 Highway 2427, bypass east, Suite 30, again on June 12.
Move to approve.
Motion by Councilmember Aldridge.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Hughes, further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Number 13, is a resolution to close a capital projects in the water and sewer funds, this is from our past aye and aye project, and you will see in the memo that we are closing that grant, and actually have a fund balance left.
Wait a minute, Mr. Mayor.
Chris is going to spend it.
That thing says we spent $384,484,200. I don't think that's quite right.
I think there's a couple extra numbers in that.
I think there was a typo.
I've been waiting on this, I've been waiting on this.
I hope to learn to type before I retire. No, it, it was 3,484.
Well, I'm so glad I caught that.
She just got a couple extra numbers in there. Okay, and then the second one was the Curtail Creek project, and where we only spent 241,000 of the 303. If Counsel's in agreement, we'll do a budget amendment and put those back into our fund balance.
Water and sewer fund balance.
Water and sewer, yes.
So moved.
Motion by Councilmember Hall.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Bramlett, further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Next is update on our 201617 houses to be demolished under the minimum housing. Mr. Robinson.
Is this your night here?
Oh, I think next month will be even more fun. Okay, um, oh. I was going to pass these out to you, I guess I can do that.
Thank you. I can't even read that.
Thank you.
If you mess it, if you mess it on the screen, you probably can't.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks, Kim.
I like this.
Okay, what I've just given you is, that's our, for lack of a better term, that's our, kind of our demo watch list that I've thrown together. I went through a bunch of different documents that we had several months back, and listed all sorts of different properties and kind of threw them all in there on one giant list, so there may be a few that have been torn down in there that I'm not aware of yet. And you'll see kind of a snapshot of it right here, the items that are in gray are gone.
Or what?
Are gone. They've been torn down or burned, and like I said, there might be some lower down on that list that were done through another program or by the owner that I just haven't seen yet, I haven't gone and checked on every one of those personally, this is just a list of 40 or so items that we've been working off of. The items that are, that you see at the top, we've got Cleveland there, which was done last fiscal year, it was, I didn't have the records for the others, so I just kind of started fresh with what we got since I've been here. The items that are gray are gone, the items in red are those we have an ordinance for demolition for right now, one that you've approved, and the items that are in yellow are ones that we had looked at doing this year, but we did not do an ordinance for yet. So I'm going to give you an update on these 12 that you see right here, starting with Area Avenue, that was a leftover from fiscal year 1516, that was demolished and cleaned up, I've got some pictures of the site there. So that was the one kind of rollover that we had from that year, from last year. 316 Side Street, this one, one of the ones that, it was demolished by the owner prior to the demolition ordinance, so you'll see, you'll see it shows up as gray on there, so we didn't do, we don't have to worry about that one. Peachtree Street, this was done just recently, it was burned by the fire department and scheduled for cleanup, actually coming up this week, I talked to the contractor and he said he may be able to get, get started on it tomorrow. 806 Summit, the same, it was burned by the fire department, it's currently in the process of being cleaned up, these pictures were all taken today, so pretty, pretty current, you can see they're laying, laying seed out there on the site. 1730 Blanche Street, that's scheduled to be burned by the fire department within the next month, and it's scheduled for cleanup following that, we've got a contract on that as well. And then 532 Colston is also scheduled, that's scheduled to be burned in, I think, June 8, June 8, and it's little brother next door to it right there, 534 Colston, we've also got a cleanup, a cleanup scheduled on those following the burn. I don't, don't, is there a basement on one of those, on either of those, do you know, Kenny? There is, on both of them or just one? Just one, okay, all right, so I don't know the exact cost is going to be on the one with the basement, but the other one should be pretty, shouldn't be that significant. 1606 West Main Street, it's really kind of hard to see here, but there is a house behind those bushes, I think it's getting to this point, most people don't even notice it anymore, but there's still a house back there, it's in really bad shape, the roof has collapsed, and I think it's actually got a tree growing up through the middle of it right now, so... What's that?
During the winter.
Yeah, yeah, during the wintertime, you can see it, yeah, but since all the, all the leaves have come back on, it's kind of hidden, but it's, it's still there, and that is scheduled for demolition cleanup this month, we've actually got, we got a contract on, on that and the next two here, this one, 507 Corbin Street, scheduled for demolition cleanup, and then also 509 Corbin Street, scheduled for demolition cleanup, those will both be done at the same time there. Main Street, there were some issues with burning that, obviously with the foliage around there, proximity to the adjacent house, Corbin Street, those are both block buildings, and that causes, it's just kind of hard to really get them down by burning them, so those will just be demolished. 1404, getting to the last two that we got on the list here, 1404 Pennington, this one's a bane of my existence. Anyway, the, this one's been, there was some work being done on this, we did not do an ordinance yet because the owner did show interest in fixing the house, some work's been done, but it has been delayed for a little while, several months now since anything's actually happened, what you see there is basically how it's existed for the past probably three months or so. Staff has been holding off on this one, we've been getting some other stuff done, but I think this is probably one that we're probably going to want to hold over until next year and go ahead and do an ordinance on it then, and go ahead and have it brought down, but I'll, I'll defer to y'all on what you think is best on that one. 316 Side Street, this is one that depending on, depending on what's, depending on what James Luster finds on it, we may be able to take off the list. It's, you know, it still needs some work, but it has had major exterior work done, there were some new windows put in, new door, there's been, it's been painted, a lot of the rot has been fixed, you can still see an awful lot of stuff there, it's, you know, it's probably not the best house by any means, but it may meet minimum code on the exterior right now. James has been unable to get inside the house at this point to inspect the inside, but he has been working with the owner and does have an inspection, a follow-up inspection scheduled on that, so if nothing's been done on the inside, you know, it's, it's still in horrible condition, then we'll have to see, but there's somebody living there right now, I noticed some curtains up and everything when I went by there, so I think that there's been substantial work done, and I'm hoping this is one we can take off the list. And if you remember, this one right here, 316 Sides, they're actually on the same property, there's actually, there were actually two houses on the same property, this is the one that was torn down right next to it right here. If, if it's still in bad condition on the inside though, and it's, it's still too far gone, it might be one that we recommend, we recommend Counsel considering an ordinance for next year also. But that's, we're looking at a total of 12 houses, and we should have 10 of them down before the end of the fiscal year, one way or another, either through the owners or through demolition by the city or through burning by the fire department, and then we'll have one, possibly two, next year to add to the list. I would recommend, staff is going to start going through the demolitions, up the demolition watch list that you've got there, start looking at all these and trying to prioritize, probably pull out another eight or nine properties, see if we can't maybe even get 10 out of there to include. If Counsel, you know, sees one in particular on there that is, is just in, you know, really bad shape and you want us to consider that as well, then please, please let me know. I think we got really lucky this year with a lot of stuff, we didn't really have a whole lot in terms of asbestos abatement that needed to happen, I think we had two houses that had some, you know, a few thousand dollars worth of asbestos, and it needed to come out, and in the grand scheme of things, that's, that's really small, so we dodged a bullet with that so far, but it could, could go up next year, could go down, you just never know.
Sure.
One of the things I was going to mention tonight on the roundtable, since we didn't have this yet, was that 110 Park Ridge, I go by there every day.
Yeah, and this, this is...
And basically, if I remember correctly, that, the porch area came down with the storm.
Microburst.
With the microburst four years ago, and like you look at it, you look at who owns it, that's a Florida, person in Florida that owns that house, have we reached out, if they're on this list, tell me one more time, for instance, that house, if they would come and do that corner area, would probably be...
Yeah, it's, it's on this list, again, I didn't, I didn't, I drew this list up from, from what Keith and from what James and some others had put together, I'd probably go ahead and take it off the list, honestly, it does need work, it needs to be fixed up, we have had problems getting in touch with the property owner, but I do have, James and Nosher are working on minimum housing on that one, and trying to address it, again, from, you know, the side of can we get these things fixed before it gets to that point.
Did Carolyn reach out on the yard on that, because they mowed it last week?
I think so.
I saw them down there cleaning it up.
Yeah, I think so.
Actually, the lady that used to live there for years, I was surprised to see her there, because I didn't think she had anything to do with it again, but she was down there cleaning it up, so I don't know if she's related to the people out of Florida?
I don't know, I don't know a whole lot about it, I know she's been very difficult to get in touch with in general, she's been pretty much unresponsive, and that's, that's a common problem we're going to keep running into with these, is, you know, we've got houses that aren't necessarily as bad as some of those that we're tearing down, you know, we're trying to prioritize those, but you know, it's, they're getting to the point where they're going to be beyond repair before too long, we're trying to get them fixed, but you know, what do you do when you just have an absentee landlord, can't get in touch with them? Not a real good answer for it, but we're, we're trying to, trying to get some of those taken care of at the same time that we're working through this as well, so...
The ones on the back sheet of the paper, all of them have been taken care of, correct?
No, no, that's just a continuation, I just didn't have enough room, yeah.
No, actually, I'm looking at certain addresses that you have.
Okay.
And those, a few of them, I see three of them where the lots have been cleared.
Okay.
That's why I was asking if, if the ones on the back, if all of them have been cleared and...
Yeah, if you let me know, shoot me an email or something, if you know of one on here, I'd be more than happy to take it off, we got a lot on here, so...
Yeah, like the two on Wall Street in particular.
Okay, all right.
The city actually done them last year.
Okay.
And 626, I think the property owner done that in the last two months or so.
Okay, yeah, if you, you shoot me an email or something, let me know which ones is are, I'll take them off, I don't want to have extra ones on there that are already done.
And I appreciate Ms. Hall bringing up the one...
And I appreciate Ms. Hall bringing up the 110 Park Ridge Drive House. I've had quite a few people mention that to me, as you turn off Side Street there, looking at that, so. I didn't notice they mowed the grass, that was, that helps a little bit. But the houses that we've talked about in previous meetings up on 52, Highway 52, just beyond Crook Motor on the opposite side of the road, there's two houses right there. Is there any, anything we can do about those?
Kevin, I actually want to ask you to reach out to Mr. Beecham again and see if he would voluntarily do anything. They do not meet the 50% according to James.
Okay.
He had, he had come to us and wanted to demolish one of them, and.
James had, is that right?
James Beecham.
Mr. Beecham.
Mr. Beecham.
Okay. I want to say that we'd gotten something started on that, but I don't think we heard anything back yet, but I'll double check on that.
He owns both of those.
Okay. Okay.
Council, have any further questions?
I like this. Very organized.
Number 15, is a street closure request for the Torrey Elvis 5K Run.
Move approve.
Motion by Councilmember Aldridge, second by Councilmember Bramlett, further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Next, this is consider our upcoming vacancy on city boards and commissions. We are not voting tonight. This is for your information, for you to start looking at this. You see, we have a few that are coming off, and I'm assuming Kevin, Kevin, stand up, we're here. If you've got them listed here, they either cannot or they do not want to be reappointed?
Uh, I didn't, actually didn't.
I think that's what it says. So I guess the three on the zoning board of adjustment do not wish to be reappointed?
I know, I think if it says, if it says reappointment on there, then I think that we're, we're basically stating that they're available to be reappointed. There should be some notes at the bottom.
It says complete their terms or do not want to be reappointed.
If this is in, are you talking about the agenda notes?
Yes.
Yeah. Ms. Bowers compiled that and contacted folks within the department and got the information from them. I know Kevin was out of town at a conference last week, so he's probably not aware of some of the latest updates, but when Ms. Bowers was compiling the information, reached out to everybody who was eligible to reappointment to see if they wanted to be reappointed.
And Carolyn.
And Carolyn, sorry. So these are folks that are either not eligible or are not interested.
Richie Hearn has offered to shift over to board of adjustment. That was one of the, one of the possible reappointments that was there. Conrad Carter will not be available to serve anymore, so.
Counsel, I would encourage you to look at that, and we will talk about that at our next meeting. We're not going to look to appoint anything tonight, but I would encourage you to look at that.
I apologize, I would have looked at that a little bit more detail for you guys.
Let me ask one question. One of the volunteers who filled out an application, do all the boards require that they live in the city?
It varies by every board, so you'll have to look at every board. The requirements are with each board, so you'll have to look at each one.
Because she lives in Norwood.
No, they're not required. Some of them do not require.
Yeah, Parks and Recreation has some that allow for county residents.
And actually, you had one or two mentioned there that, I thought we, when we combined that, we increased the number, but as they come off, we were not going to reappoint to try to get that number back down to what it was before.
I'll have to, I'll have to take a look at, I'll take a look at it.
Look at that, because I knew that was our intention. We didn't kick anyone off, but as they were, their terms rotated out, we were not going to reappoint.
On Parks and Rec?
Yes.
Okay, I didn't, yeah, I didn't do anything with that that would have been Lisa, but we can definitely.
You'll look at that.
Sure, sure.
Thank you.
Okay.
Number 18, consider setting a date for the Downtown Christmas for November 17th, 5:30 to 9:00. That'd be the Friday before Thanksgiving, just like it was last time. Motion by Councilmember Bramlett.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Hughes, further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Second issue they wanted to bring up, they have, now that we have changed our ordinance some on allowing beer in the downtown, they have requested to have a beer garden. They have not identified the actual location, they just wanted to know if council was agreeable with them having that, and then they will proceed further.
Yes, yeah, a motion.
I'd like to have a motion placed.
Move.
Motion by Councilmember Bramlett.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Hughes, further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries.
Just as a reminder, guys, that is the same Friday or the same weekend as the National League of Cities in Charlotte, but.
We could get back.
That's right.
We can get back.
We can get back.
Number 19, is consider attendance at the Electra Cities Annual Conference. If you know, you can go ahead and tell Mr. Ferris. If not, please look at your calendar and say I'm going. I see 4, 7, everybody at Mr. Dry looks like.
So go Thursday, since the meeting starts on Friday.
Since you start so early on Friday, you'll have to go Thursday. Okay, thank you. Information is in your agenda about the 2017 pool season. Anyone have any questions on that? Hearing 9, I'm going to go around the table, Mr. Ferris.
I do not have anything.
Mr. Townsend.
No comments.
Ms. Hughes.
No comments.
Mr. Aldridge.
Yes, sir.
Ms. Hall.
One thing, council, yeah, listen, I take my time here. Those of us that serve on these things, that we have to go out of town to things. This was a Council of Government Region of Excellence Award that was given and presented last Wednesday night in Charlotte. I did get other municipalities in the county to carpool, which is a good thing. I reached out to those that are, were going and said, just ride together. The Centennial Park that I spoke about, spoke, I guess, the last meeting in Bessemer City, it has pictures of what it looks like now, and it was an area originally with a building that was torn down because it, I'm going to pass it around or leave it for anybody that might want to look at it. Again, there was some mention about the November Christmas, the Downtown Christmas, a comparison to Centennial Park with the Beer Garden. Centralana recognized the quality of life. They won the improving quality of life for the region because of that park, taking the downtown desolate area and building it up. So I'd throw that to anybody that wants to look at it. And Lisa, before, I have a request of someone that was here, that came to this, that asked us about what we do with the, with our amphitheater at City Lake Park. So there are people that were from the region that knew we had an amphitheater. So if we have any pictures of that, there are some folks that live other places that want pictures of the amphitheater, if you'll touch base with me. Yeah, thank you very much, because the folks know that we have them, and they're asking for them, so, thanks.
Mr. Dry?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Whitley?
The only thing I have, I have a RPO meeting this week, so I wanted to ask council if there's anything I need to bring up, any questions I need to give an answer. If you don't have anything right now.
I would prefer you to sit down and talk with Mr. Ferris about some things that he talked about at the, his meeting, so you can continue that discussion at your meeting.
If anybody else has anything, send me, just send me an email. It's Thursday night, so.
Mr. Bramlett?
I wanted to point out that this is the 125th anniversary of the first brick building in Stanley County. And I don't know if she's got the picture, yeah.
I wasn't bringing it up right now.
Thank you very much. This is the, the two buildings where David Beaver's office is now, but it started off in 1892 with the first brick building, and the irony of that is that there was an article in the Concord newspaper, sort of a pejorative article about, they couldn't make bricks out of clay in Stanley County, and there was no railroad to bring in bricks, so that's why there had never been a brick building in our area until 1892. They completed those, those three buildings. The two on the left were demolished, that short building on the right was added, and then it was extended to hold David Beaver. So we thought that was.
I've heard, is that the oldest one in the city or only in county?
County and city, yes. And I have that, I have that material that shows, that goes into that, yeah. But it's interesting, and you will probably see something in the newspaper soon about how many tenants have been in that building, those two buildings, and interesting, but those are the oldest brick buildings in Stanley County, right there.
Judging by the brickwork, David, on the far left, I'm assuming the part that was taken down would be toward the bank building from you, correct?
I think that's where the, I know, of course, when I lived here, it was Stanley Auto Parts.
Right.
And Jerry Whitley and Jerry Burleson got some kind of grant or something, and they heard that, and there's a number of tenants beside me. There were, Whitley was there one time, Robert Young, that was our survey officer there one time, Morgan Flucker there one time, and all of them, Steve Schratt's Insurance Service was there one time, and there's been a ton there. We talked to the, we talked to the bank the other day about, you know, if you're selling to this, you know, if you're selling that other building, what are you going to do with me? I was wondering what I was going to do. They said, well, now they have the plans to sell them, and they won't sell it, but right now they're. I was told it was a brick, a brick building, and forced down all the doors.
I have no idea.
It was Stanley, Stanley Bottling, Stanley Dairies, Stanley Auto Parts, Whitley Reilly and David Beaver's are the most recent ones.
Okay.
Yeah. Farmers Hardware was there, Sibley Garage.
Yes, I'm wrong.
Okay, yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Bramlett, further? Do you have anything further?
No, no.
Okay, thank you.
And just our seats, Christina placed at each of our seats tonight, a memo talking about waste management, recycling timeline, and Nana mentioned with Public Works Week, she's doing something with the third graders at Central. Guys and ladies, it is our young folks, it is our children that are going to lead this effort for us, for a lot of people with recycling. So this is the outline of how they're going to get the PR out there. I truly believe, and it is going to be a challenge, and I guess I, since I have this, I look at Christina and I look at Nana, it's going to be a challenge to get people to buy into it, and we're doing it. So I think all the opportunities for public engagement and public awareness, we've got to really, really try to do collectively, because if people jump on board to begin with on July 10th when it starts, we'll be a heck of a lot better off than if they drag their feet. So anyway, we can do that. To that end, I will commend Christina and those people downtown. You may have talked about this when I was not here, the new recycle and trash receptacles downtown are great, and that may get people started with the recycling in mind.
Just one question in regard, I'm glad you brought that up. Anyway, we can add East Alvermore Elementary, what, why did we?
See, I think, yeah, I mean, I think we need to do that, and even the middle school.
No, just so that nobody won't think that we picking and choosing.
Yeah, Nana, the question is.
Can we add East Alvermore Elementary for the recycling education? For some reason, that's the only elementary school, since we're approaching the third graders, we, that's the only other elementary school in the city. I think it'd be fair to do.
Oh, I think so, too.
Rather than just one. If it's possible.
I think the problem is that it's too close to the end of the year, they have so many things scheduled. We were, we were lucky to find even a little bit of time at Central, so.
That's one of the things.
We did make effort, that's all.
We could ask East if they've got any time left.
I just wanted to.
They have testing and some of that stuff going on.
Could we, because school starts fairly July, I mean, August, could we maybe circle back around and see if perhaps to reach out to East, maybe.
And to the middle school?
Yeah, towards the latter part of July, maybe, and see, because we're only starting this in July, and school goes back in August, latter part of August, that maybe we could get that group of kids and have some time with them.
Okay.
If nothing else, maybe the students at East can at least take the paperwork home to their tour, and maybe their parents might see it, you know?
Okay.
Thank you.